The Board are asked to state their name and address for the record and their comments may be limited to only one time and I'll limit their comments to five minutes. The Board may limit your comments, never mind, we don't need that one. So would anyone like to address the Board tonight? Again, state your name and address for the record. Would anyone like to address the Board?
Hello, my name is Karen Canar Blackburn. My address is 501 Gas Coin Drive, Waukesha, Wisconsin, 53188. And I have been an employee of Whitnall School District. And good evening and thank you for all allowing me this opportunity. Dear Members of the Board of Education, two weeks ago today, I tendered my resignation from my 20-year position of mathematics teacher at Whitnall High School. I did not resign due to the offer of another position in which I could further grow as an educator. On the contrary, I resigned for the sake of my health, for my family's well-being, and because of my ethical principles. The stress, emotional abuse, intimidation, discrimination, and bullying I have endured over these last five of my 20 years at Whitnall High School has been nothing like I've ever experienced in 32 years of teaching. The climate at the high school is toxic and caustic, and quite frankly, there is no trust. Trust is earned, it cannot be forced. Leadership is about service to others. It does not give one the right to exert his or her power arbitrarily to satisfy his or her own ego. I've come to realize that committees at the high school, such as the Climate Committee, are merely a ruse, as ultimately decisions have been made unilaterally with minimal, if any, teacher input. I have sought employment elsewhere, but you see, I'm stuck. Generally, new employers contact current employers as a reference. I have recommendations from students, parents, school board members, colleagues, department heads, and former administrators to include superintendents. According to protocol, however, references are called, reference calls are made to current administrators. Given the behavior of the current regime towards others and me, I can only imagine the unflattering comments made about my performance in an insulated phone call. On at least two occasions after multiple interviews and visits, it seems certain that I could move on and leave these daunting years behind me, only to be told in the 11th hour that each particular district would be moving in another direction. In June of 2011, I was notified that I was the recipient of Wisconsin's Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. Each year, two math and two science teachers from each state are selected for this prestigious award. This particular year, there were two math and three science teachers. I was thrilled, since following my nomination by a very struggling Whitnall High School student, I had put in a large amount of time and a great deal of effort satisfying the requirements and gathering the documentation and student data for this award. Former UW Madison Chancellor John D. Wiley was the guest speaker at this recognition banquet, held in January of 2012. And I was fortunate to have Mr. Wiley sit with me prior to his address. Only after the ceremony that I, did I discover that Mr. Wiley's presence at my table was due to the extra room. Apparently, I was the only one of the five recipients who did not have my superintendent and my principal present. Invitations were sent to these administrators, as well as a press release from Dr. Tony Evers, Wisconsin State Superintendent of Public Instruction. Please know that I don't mention these absences out of a sense of herd pride, but to oppress upon you that I am a woman of integrity and my comments are not unsubstantiated, fabricated, or the result of paranoia on my part. The United States government has a system of checks and balances at its core. Currently, Whitnall High School does not. There is no balance of power. I cannot say for certain that Act 10 has played a role in this development, but it most certainly hasn't helped. I have had conversations over the phone and in person with a lawyer whose expertise is in school law. He found my statements and those of other individuals in the district to be quite credible. However you see, none of us, including myself, was willing to speak up for fear of losing our jobs, especially in this economic climate. Who will stand up to a bully when he holds your livelihood in his hands? I'm emancipated now, so I will speak up, that is. But I want you to know that I resign at great cost to my family and with a great deal of sadness in my heart. I will miss my students and their families and members of this tight-knit community. Ever since I can remember, I always wanted to be a teacher. I always wanted to teach the grade I was in. Then, when I reached high school, I realized I had a knack for explaining a subject that causes most people to cringe.
Just by hearing the four-letter word, M-A-T-H.
My father, a retired college Kelp professor, has always talked about psychic income. I keep that in the back of my mind at my class reunions when my 750-plus classmates scoff at the idea of their valedictorian becoming a teacher instead of a doctor or engineer or whatever career is sanctioned by our society for valedictorians. I don't know what I'll do now. I don't know if I will continue in education or if my second act will be an entirely new career. Some may call me crazy for releasing the proverbial bird in the hand, but in all honesty, I'd rather live homeless on the streets than endure another year of this unprofessional, condescending, and unconstitutional treatment. I implore you, the Board, as representatives of our Whitnall community, to step forward and to help mold Whitnall High School into a place where both students and educators can flourish. All Whitnall High School educators, and not just the chosen few yes-men, deserve to be heard without fear of reprisal or repercussions. In my humble opinion, there needs to be some reorganization of the high school's infrastructure. Relationships need to be repaired. Without this and more, this culture of intimidation will continue. Trust and education go hand in hand. It takes a village to raise a child, not one or two individuals with self-serving interests. If Whitnall High School truly wants to raise the bar locally and compete globally, then there needs to be a foundation of trust, communication, respect, and professionalism upon which all stakeholders can perform his or her role in the educational process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak with the Board tonight? Let's come out, state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Ruppin. I live at 4027 South 119th Street. I'm here to discuss the new business agenda about parents losing the busing contracts for Pius, Wisconsin Lutheran, Martin Lutheran, St. Matthias. I am a parent of two children who go to St. Matthias School, and I am here because I, I would not like to lose the busing service to St. Matthias. I received the letter about this agenda on Thursday, and so I had two business days to try to gather my information about what was going on with the busing situation. I've spoken with the St. Matthias principal. I've also contacted all of the high schools involved to just try to get an idea of how many people use the bus service. At St. Matthias, we have four families, six children of elementary school age that ride that bus. After talking with the high school people, I understand that there is very few participation of taking that bus to those high schools. I was a Pius graduate, and when I was in the eighties, they offered that bus service to take me from my Whitnall School District home to Pius. It was a huge benefit to my family. So I was very happy at the thought of my children going to St. Matthias and be able to receive that busing service, which I have for the past five years or so. I understand that at the high school level, children are starting to be able to transport themselves, but this is not at the elementary school level. I also am aware that there are other busing of elementary schools. For example, St. Mary's buses their children through the Whitnall School District. I'm, I'm not sure, you know, where the division lies, if it's a numbers game. I know we don't have a lot of children on that bus. I know there are St. Matthias families that live on south of Beloit Road where I think the dividing line is for what is considered a parish school. I've also been in discussions or in communication with the Archdiocese of Milwaukee to try to identify where those lines live. I have phone calls out to the superintendent of the Milwaukee Parish Schools, but she was out of town and not able to communicate with me. I'm also aware that those parish lines are based on lines of maybe 30 years ago, and the demographic and the population has changed. For example, when I graduated from high school 30 years ago, there really wasn't a Foxwood Crossing subdivision. Those were all fields. And it wasn't until I came back after college and working that I even understood that there was all kinds of a community over there. I think I'm the only person from St. Matthias here. It was hard to gather people within two business days. Again, I am in communication with the four families that are at St. Matthias. Those families are Sean and April Lipt of 4221 South 104th, Wendy and Mike Mattel at 3666 South 123rd Street, Melissa and Dave Fullercheck of 3594 South 112th Street. Also, the other families from, that live south of Beloit Road are Kelly and Tom Latamski 4445 South 117th Street, and another St. Matthias family, the Reig family of 12202 Sunset Lane. So I'm here to hear the discussion, to hope that my busing service doesn't go away, to see if we can reach some sort of agreement so I can still get transportation for my children. Thank you.
We'll be talking about that later, so you can participate.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to address the Board?
My name is Jean Zepka. I'm at 4050 South 106 Greenfield. And I'm here also to talk about the busing situation. My child goes to Pius High School, and yes, he will be a senior, and he does have his license, but we have one car. We've been using the bus service for years. I know a lot of people don't want to use it, but I really depend on it. And it's, it really isn't a dollar amount that I'm concerned about. If you calculate it out, that the dollar amount presented in the letter is less than a monthly bus pass would provide. I did look it up for my child to take the bus from my house to Pius. It would take 55 minutes. That's in good weather, and it would be two buses he'd have to transfer. So at this point, I'm a single parent. I'm trying to stay afloat. I, I really don't want to consider having to get a second car, possibly paying for school parking at this time. I did contact Janice Zamorazek in Madison today, documenting and looking at all the state rules that, that this service is state law. And she gave me the comment that, that the committee has to provide documentation, that the cost is more than one and a half times the average cost for, for all the children to be bused. And I guess I'll hear your, your comments later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the Board? Seeing none, we'll move to approval number four, approval of our consent agenda. A is approval of new staff hires minus the middle school special education position. Administration has withdrawn that recommendation. And B, approval of staff resignations. First of all, before we approve this, would anyone like to pull one of those two?
Well, I would like to pull A, because I have some discussion regarding it. And I think we also have to pull it because we have an update.
Okay.
Which are one of those positions.
Alright, anyone else? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda, item B, approval of staff resignations. So moved. Moved by Stephanie. For your second?
Second.
Nancy? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion carries. So now we will entertain consent agenda, approval of new staff hires, minus the middle school special ed position.
Okay, and I pulled this because I just wanted to make some reference in regards to the instructional effective coaches positions. You know, even though I know we're kind of in the 11th hour on this, and it's really, at this point, more procedural than discussion, I just wanted to point out that back in March, when we, when we talked about these positions, I had some concerns about how we were going to fit these in our, in our budget. And to be honest, we were supposed to run this, these positions through finance and personnel committees for further discussion of how these positions were going to be funded. And that never occurred. And further, it kind of seems that the dollar amount that was allotted exceeds the dollar, exceeded the dollar amount for these positions that was projected on this March, on a memo we received in March, that was supposed to be, you know, a break even, which I had questions about whether it was really a break even, given the savings that we were going to have by not having late start and early release. So, you know, I guess at this point, we are in the 11th hour, but I still think that going forward, we really need to look at the impact of what the cost of these new positions are on our budget, as well as what we often talk about is, you know, looking at where we're making these investments and what is, you know, at some point, what the outcome does have on student achievement. So, you know, that's my concern, is that, you know, we're, I don't even know how, you know, really how we're paying for it, because we really never discussed it.
Any other comments?
Yeah. For the two, for two of the coaches, they both have Edgerton Elementary as the place of employment. None of them, neither, there's one for the high school, one for the middle school, and then it says two for Edgerton, is that a typo, that one's supposed to be HCE?
I would not know.
No, one will be a, either one would be a single building, one would be, okay, kindergarten first, secondary, and the other would be grades three to five. They both came from Edgerton, I don't know if that's maybe...
Well, it says place of employment. So they, they're going to be between both of the elementaries?
Correct, yep. They'll be focused on grade, they'll hold things.
Any other questions or comments?
I tend to agree with Eileen, that I think sometimes we do get ourselves into a bit of a corner if we approve the idea without the financing. And we've done that on occasion, that we've split the issue, that, you know, we like the idea, but we want to see further numbers. And sometimes I wonder if that's really a good procedure to follow, if we don't have all the numbers in front.
It's a, any other comments? It's just a tricky timing issue, because you have to hire staff this time of year. We all know that. And if you don't get those out there and get those decisions made, and our budget dollars don't come until later. So we really do need to be trusting administration to make those decisions within the budget, and this very much fits with our goal. So I, I know we have vetted this at the full board meeting. Point well taken, that maybe more discussion could happen at committee levels, but at the moment, it's on the table. So any other comments or questions about this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve it. So moved. And moved. And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have our reports. A, facilities update on the 116th Project on Edgerton Parking Lot. I believe Matt's got some information for us on that.
Good evening. The 116th Street Project schedule was really the best thing I could find for you guys to, to bring in the loop on the project. I would say that they're a little behind right now. There's no erosion control out there, but, and I talked to Trevor on the phone, there's not that much erosion control work, so in my opinion, they're behind, but they feel like they're still good. So, you know, barring any weather, we should see quite a bit of work out there this week, at least as the utilities start going in.
And would any project have it finished?
Eight-four. It would be the, the day of epoxy paint, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions on that piece?
Did the narrowing of the roads, did that ever get resolved?
We sent our comments out to the city, to, I think Rick Sokol and Jeff Katz, and I had sent one, and I know Dr. Holt said sent one, and I do not believe we received a response.
We did, we got a, we got a drawing of it. Well, let's get that to the Board, a copy of that.
Yeah, maybe that came directly to Dr. Holt's.
Dr. Holt's, right, and it was...
Yeah, I did not see that.
We did have to get a copy of that.
But I do have, you know, a set of construction drawings that I could forward in a PDF format, but it kind of shows the same things I've already shown you.
Yeah, no, I, I'll check with Dr. Holt's on that and get back to the Board on...
So the documents that you saw, Matt, or what were originally proposed and didn't make any changes to the concerns that...
Right, there's been no change to the design of the project to date yet.
Well, they're getting ready to do it, so there probably aren't going to be any changes, would be my guess.
I would, I would be interested to see what the response was from the city.
Maybe the map was the same, but it showed it better. It didn't look like it's going to block as much traffic as we thought when I glanced at it, but I'll get it to the Board.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, yeah.
I'll get it to the Board right away to make sure. It's just sitting on my desk.
Sure.
I didn't know you didn't, you don't have a copy of what it looks like?
I have a copy of the, the final drawing, the design. I don't have any email correspondence between Jeff or Rick.
I don't know that it was that. I think it was the original. I'm not sure it's modified. I'll get, get it.
Yeah, on my end, the email that I sent back and the one that Dr. Holt and I put together, as far as I know, there was no response.
And at that time, they would do the middle school?
Yes, they're going to come through and pave the bus lanes, so that's all.
At the same time.
Yep. The Edgerton Parking Lot, if that's all the questions that are out there for 116th Street right now. The Edgerton Parking Lot, in the memo, we have our construction drawings, waiting for the soil borings. The information for the soil borings is important because it tells us what's under the ground. It helps us set our budget, helps us know how much backfilling we might have to do in excavating. So it's really, and we learned that quite a bit doing the athletics project. We had over 40 soil borings on this site, so it really, it really helped tighten up the paving budgets. So that's what we're waiting for. My recommendation would be to do what we talked about at the, at the Finance Committee, where we, you know, seal it, stripe it, make the design work, maybe buy some, you know, or get some barricades from the Village of Hills Corners, you know, to try to, you know, influence people to go the way of the design and not try to work around it. And put the construction documents, construction documents out to bid in January, and, you know, get our numbers, get board approval, you know, early in the, in the winter, and get us, you know, on schedule for June construction.
And you're going to work with Mr. Diacristo to get the information to the parents that this is what's going on?
Yep.
And have a plan for...
Yeah, once we decide what action we're going to take, yep, we're going to have, actually, we're going to work on two things. We're going to do a staff internal piece, because I know Chris is going to make some staffing changes as far as who does what for supervision. So there's that piece, and then the parent piece. So follow the same format we did when we, we did the Hills Corners Parking Lot.
So the ceiling and the striping is almost like a...
That's going to be a cost of the district, you know, and, you know, it could be, could be five grand.
But that's going to get done prior to school starting in September, so we'll have a temporary traffic...
We'll have a test run right away, first day of school. You know, or the first month of school, to see if this design even works. If, if there's addition, the beauty about this is if there's additional comments, concerns, we can pick up this design, we can tweak it, maybe we can look at it again, and then still meet the bidding deadline. So I think it's a great idea to give it a trial run, considering that, that space has such limited, you know, improvements that we can make without really doing...
Does that need to come back to us for approval if it's only $5,000?
No, that wouldn't be, if, if, if we are going to move forward with the project, those bids obviously would be coming back to you.
Okay. Other questions?
So then, is it reasonable to assume that we would have the results of those soil borings in time for which financing facilities?
I'm, everything I have planned is for the next August financing facility meeting, so I'll have that information for you at that time.
Alright, great.
Yeah, we did not make, we did not make a bidding deadline. The phone call I made to our consultant on this, the civil engineer, they had a project go out to bid and only received one bid back, just because schedules are full, and the pricing they did see was...
But there's not going to be any problem getting someone to seal and stripe the parking lot?
No, no, that I can, you know, I can cast a pretty big net and try to find, you know, smaller contractors and just try to work it out for ceiling, striping.
Because I feel like August is right...
Right around the corner, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be fine.
This has got to be approved, though, under A, correct? We haven't really officially at the board level approved the project, so we'll fall under A.
Correct, yes.
Committee has recommended it, but that's...
Correct, yes.
In order to move forward, we have to have this on our next agenda.
Right, the ceiling portion of it, something we can, you know, small enough to pick up in the operating budget in case it doesn't go forward tonight.
But the rest...
But where we're at right now in the timeframe is really, we have all the advantage in the world. We're not up against anything on this one, so.
Alright, I agree. It's great to try this traffic pattern first and see if this works, and maybe we don't need to make all the changes, so.
And it feels good to work ahead, so.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Matt.
Alright, this will come back, no, this won't come back then. You can just keep us updated at the meeting on August 4th.
Yep.
Alright, thank you. Under new business, we have A, stay right there, review of 2014-15 Capital Improvement Plan, and Matt?
So really what we're, we're talking about tonight is that, that format that we want to use going forward for future capital planning projects. There are items in that project list right now that is a living document. There's going to be administrative review on some of these other items. We're probably going to be looking at pieces, you know, from all departments. So if year three looks a little different, you know, that's expected. It is, it is a living document, and as we meet and just start, we're just starting this with you guys, so, you know, it's, it's my hope that we'll continue to use the format going forward for, you know, Doug's, Doug's side of it, my side of it. I'd be more than happy answering any other questions on it. We're really, I just want to be clear that, you know, in the long-range plan, you know, there are projects. If you guys take action tonight, we can still, you know, tweak those projects within that. There's no, you know, it's just a document, it's a form, it's a format. I just want to be clear that everybody's understanding of that.
Well, I would say that the discussion at the Finance Committee meeting was that we start taking care of these items.
Correct.
And using Fund...
Forty-one.
Forty-one, and start chipping away, and, and I like what Eric does, is he crosses it off and gives a date to it.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that Eileen has asked for that, and received it.
Yep.
And like to keep that going, that we're accomplishing this.
Completion dates, final project costs versus budgeted costs, just some detail there.
But we, we've let these things go long enough. The money's there, let's start getting them done.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
We did ask that you put at the bottom of this document the two big, big items, so when you bring it back for approval, those are like to be determined.
Mm-hmm, the bus, it would be the middle school stairs and Edgerton Parking Lot.
No, I thought it was going to be Hills Corners Elementary and the pool.
Oh, the, the...
The biggies, that are not...
Those two you mentioned are on here for 2014-15.
Well, those, the Hills Corners project was...
Those are to be determined.
Yes, to be determined.
So we just want to put those on this list so that the public is not surprised.
And, and, yes.
And they're always rolling with it.
Yes, and I, but, okay, just to be clear on my end, I didn't include them in here because I want to keep that format consistent, and we're going to, we're going to make changes and add at the Finance Committee meeting. So, I mean, if we're going to make, if you want me to make the changes to the Finance Committee and then it goes to the Board, I mean, that's something...
I thought we made that recommendation at the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I had the notes on there.
Yeah.
I just left the format the same, and that's why I alluded to the format in my comments. So that's why it's not on here.
I don't think we're asking to change this format. Well, how does it change it if you just put a "to be determined"? We're not asking you to plug it into spreadsheets or anything, just...
Just to add that.
And then to put a range. Remember, we said, because we have some ranges on there. Maybe you could bring that back then, the new format at the August 4th. We can still approve this without that, but I want to make sure. I thought that was a good suggestion.
Yeah, the community doesn't know what we discussed in financing facilities, so all of a sudden, they're saying, oh, what about HC? What about the security?
Right, we're not forgetting those, they're on here.
Yep. Yeah, because if somebody sees this on the outside, they may think that excluded, but in reality, we're discussing at the committee level.
The other issue that I keep forgetting to mention at the committee level is ADA concerns. Just want to make sure, this is the time to look at our facilities and say, are they really in compliance? And if so, that's great, but I know we have some areas at the high school that are not in compliance. So I don't know how you get that done, Matt, but I'd sure like our facility committee to look at that and to be aware of where those concerns are and what we, how can we can address some of those concerns. And maybe there aren't any, but I know... and what we, how can we can address some of those concerns. And maybe there aren't any, but I know we've had some parents complain.
Yes, and, and there is an ADA component, you know, to most of the projects that we do.
Yeah, the new ones there will be, but I'm talking about like the high school. Yeah, the high school for old stuff and Edgerton, all three, as long as we're looking at comprehensive facility upgrades. Like us not to forget that. Some of our old buildings have issues. Otherwise, any other comments?
Well, I guess I do have a comment. You know, Matt, years ago, you had, used to have a, a much longer list for capital improvement projects that just, you just kind of kept the list.
Yep, I still have it.
So couldn't you like attach a second sheet or something that lists all those other things that, so that we don't lose sight of all those things?
Sure, yeah, I could give the history back to, you know, 2007, that kind of shows that whole, that, that's mine, but I certainly could give that.
Because there's a lot more things on the list than just what's on that.
That have not been completed?
Piece of paper.
Well, that have been completed and that are, you know, pending. Eileen had a copy of that. I broke it down by category.
So they're not all completed?
No.
There's always.
I'm always adding to that list.
There's always a wish list that's ten miles long.
And those are more operational in nature that are handled within the budget.
No, they're capital items.
You're talking about something different.
There's some capital items in there now. Yeah, there was like, for example, this is my Ring of Bell, Music Link was one that was in there that might try to assess the management plan. So all those things I just saved and carried over in one document. When that got to be a little too cumbersome, we, we tried to categorize and narrow it down, but that other document still exists. I can, I can bring that forward for the, for August 4th.
Okay, good.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none then, thank you, Matt. We will bring this forward for a vote at the next meeting to approve the, just the 2014-15 capital improvement plan. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to have a discussion on the addition of the I, ITL position as proposed in the technology plan. And as we would expect, we have technology. Mr. Eric?
If it works.
I know someone who can fix it.
Hopefully, especially when you're up in front of the board.
Yeah.
Kind of quits your reputation on the line then, doesn't it?
And then when it crashes and burns. All right, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Eric Grand, District Technology Director. And this is more of a background and informational session this evening for just a couple of minutes on a request for another ITL position within the Whittan School District. And it's going to be an action item later on, but this is your chance to see it for the first time and then come back if you have questions for me, that kind of stuff. So a little bit of background, general description of what we're looking for with this job position. This is a position that first and foremost is a teaching position. It's not a techie position. It provides direct classroom, you know, connections and support for teachers and students on the integration of technology. And specifically for this one, looking in grade six through eight, so we're over at the middle school. This person also designs and implements in-service training for our staff. This could be anything from our summer iPad Academy, August Institute that we have right before school starts, after-school in-service trainings, that kind of training. And so this person helps with that process along with the other ITLs. One thing we would ask different on this one is we're also going to ask this person, if this position goes through, to do some light help desk support. And I'll talk about that in just a second, why we're, we're asking that right now. So again, first and foremost, it's a teaching position, direct connection with students and teachers, but also some light help desk, and that's a little bit of the techie stuff. So why do we need this? Well, the first number up there is a really big one. In the last three years, we've added over nineteen hundred devices in this district, and we need to support that. And I'm not just talking about the, does it turn on due to the lights blinking and the fan whirr and all that kind of stuff. We need to connect this to our teachers and our students because otherwise we've got several thousand pounds of very expensive paperweights. And so we need to get that connection within the classroom. Beyond that, our help desk is stretched thin. We have actually in the last couple of years pulled back and it was more of a human resources change and the way things went and scheduling and those things changed from year to year. And we're actually down on our FTE count for help desk from where we were when I took the job three years ago. We need that support for our one-to-one program. And we found this year the ITL program worked great, but we had one person doing grade six through twelve. Now we're going to roll out a one-to-one at our high school and we're going to ask that same single person to take care of grade six through twelve. That's a lot to ask. It's a big burden on one person's shoulders. So this is within our plan, our tech plan. The goal numbers are up there and I hopefully referenced it in the packet that you got, kind of thing, and right on the tech plan. And the tech plan calls for two full-time positions. We've only filled one of those so far, and that was Katherine Kaiser last year that we put her into one of these ITL positions. We do have another ITL, but that was a lateral move. We didn't hire anybody new, we didn't add a 1.0. We took our library media specialist and we put her, as the library media duties were kind of contracting, this was a natural fit because they play with each other and we moved her laterally into an ITL position. So we've only hired the 1.0 out of what was called for in the tech plan. So we're looking for a full-time person, middle school grades. They are primarily the instructional technology leader for that building. And then we also asked them to help out with a little bit of the help desk duties, a smartboard ball blue, I need one replaced quick, that kind of stuff. For reading and joining, I'm not going to sit here and, and read all this, but these are what a couple of teachers had to say. High school, middle school were the direct impact of the upper grades ITL program this year. And we had some teachers that stepped forth. I put out kind of a general call to all of them and I said, hey, I'd like to board here a few of your thoughts. And so we had some people respond back to you, you know, save them coming on in here. But they had direct interaction with our ITL this year. They were impressed with the results and it allowed them to move forward to integrate technology. I actually kind of like, it's short and sweet, the second one is going to come up here. Come on, there we go. And basically allows, it allows that teacher who may not take that step into integrating technology, so it takes the person that has the educational technology background, that expertise, and they blend it with the teacher in the classroom who's already that expert in their area there with the traditional content and they bring that together. So I liked that last comment there. I thought that was really short and to the point of what we're trying to do. So I guess questions that you have, or if we don't have questions now, this certainly is not an action item tonight. You can throw them my way over the next couple of weeks.
No questions?
Well, will this like go into like financing facilities to kind of? It obviously has to be built into the budget.
It depends on how we look at this. It's been approved technically in the tech plan already. However, anytime we bring a new position out, we generally bring it to the board. So it's an unusual one doing that. In one regard, we could say we've already approved it because it's been vetted through the entire process of the tech plan. However, we also have another piece where we always say, anytime we're going to have a new position, the district is going to bring it to the board.
Which is why it's here tonight and why we need to approve it at our next meeting. So the question is, does it need to go back through committees when it's already at the board level? That seems to me like that would be a waste of our time.
Had this not been in the tech plan, this would have come up through personnel and that kind of stuff.
Okay, well, what about like Jody's salary now that she, I mean, she is now an IT, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not saying that we couldn't use this position in the district. I think this is important. I actually think it's an important position in the district because unless we're really using these right, we're not doing the investment. But I'm just saying is, I, how can I say this? I consider Jody's position when she changed into an ITL position being the position that, of number two of the tech plan that was in the financing of the tech plan. Not just because, you know, not just because we already were spending money on her, but now that money is going through technology. So that is, my question is, I mean, my thought is this is a third position for ITL and that it was not in the tech plan.
Was it in the?
Can we afford to?
Well, one of the things, you know, we did that with Jody to, basically to try to save money at that point and say, can we exist with two? At the end of the day, we're looking at it saying, we can't. You know, there's, there's too much support needed. We don't have enough. We also kept her, and we also have to remember she had to keep her, you know, almost, we kind of call it the librarian duties in that regard. We're required, if we want common school funds, to have a district librarian. We have to or we lose that money from the state. And so she still has to take care of that common school fund budget, expend that money, take care of the contracts that are related to that. That stuff doesn't come to me at all. She does that. So she still has duties outside the ITL. And that's why, you know, we said salary's not going to change. She still has to maintain some of those duties that we have. And we have the ITL to pick up some of the traditional librarian duties too. Katherine Kaiser sat and she does, you know, the, I'm going to use the wrong term here, Jody's very upset with me, sort of the trimming. I'm not using the, the librarian term, sorry, but you know, the, going through the traditional materials and weeding that stuff out and getting rid of it when it's too old and that kind of stuff. And that, we kind of rolled under the ITL position as well.
So you're looking for money to fund the salary and it's for the 2014-15 school year. So is this in the budget that you proposed to Doug that will come through as part of the budget for salaries and benefits then?
It's, well, and, and Doug, you might want to add in onto this. I, I don't take care of any human resources, so when I budget, I don't actually put any of that in there.
So is this accounted for?
I've received nothing about what the cost of the position's going to be.
Because we would want to know that, that the cost of the position.
Joel may know it, I don't, but I don't.
So I guess my thought on that is, is that either in a memo format or as part of the next board packet that we have those figures before we approve the position so that we know how much. And if it's going to be in the, if we can work it into the budget that's coming before us. Because then if we're comfortable with it, we're approving this salary, we're going to improve the budget if it's all in those figures.
So we can do that, we can do it in a memo form real quick out of too many of these.
Makes sense. Questions?
I have a question. If we would not have had to double up the one-to-one program in the high school, would that still dictate, if, if we only had done half of it, would this person still be needed at this year or at the 14-15?
I mean, we'd be stretched in and it comes down to what, where's our breaking point, you know? We would have done two grades, so that would have taken off that nineteen hundred number down there. You could have dropped about four hundred and twenty-five devices off of there and not as much support as needed. You know, right now we have a person that's been running between two buildings, trying to support the staff and everything else. And, you know, that workload is increasing. It would have increased no matter what. At what point do we say, you know, it's a moving target, it's hard to pin that down. At what point do we say, you know, now this person cannot meet what the teacher needs and get to the places that we need her to go and now we need another?
So the three will be going between the middle schools and the high school?
We have Jody between the two elementaries and then it would be a dedicated middle school and a dedicated high school. And now the person at the high school is strictly ITL. We don't want them doing any techie stuff. What we're trying to do is if we can find the right skill set, which will be difficult, is at the middle school, we're hoping that we can find somebody that can also help out a little bit with help desk.
And do you have prospective employees?
We do not.
And then this is the one that's going to go to the high school?
No, we are existing where we go to the high school. This person's going to go to the middle school and we've looked within the district. And there are some people that do have the skill set, but the problem is they're also very excellent teachers and the curriculum that they're teaching and the classes and programs they're running. I mean, we've had this discussion amongst the admin team and we can't pull them away from those because we're worried those programs might collapse. They're, they're that integral to those programs. It's kind of a unique skill set.
And what happens if you don't find this person?
If we can't find it, we're going to have to punt, to be honest. And we'll have to work with what we have existing staff because we don't want to bring the wrong person into this because then it fails.
How soon do you need to know? How, how soon do you need this approved so you can get going on the air?
As soon as we can. The earlier the better. And we may come to what Quinn is talking about very honestly. And we may have a situation where we may not be able to find that skill set right away and we may need to leave that job position open into October or November. And in that case, we're floating and we're moving and doing whatever we have to do to cover.
So then I guess, why is this coming to us now as opposed to a month or so ago?
It was getting down the job description, exactly where do we need this person? Because there was a debate where we were going to keep the existing ITL, that kind of thing. And also remember, we didn't, you know, we just, not too many months ago, we just approved the whole, oh, let's do the whole high school, which kind of pressed the panic button in my head at that point.
Okay, so this is slated to come back. We've asked for the financials and it should really be run through Doug and the finance and the budget and take a look at that lens. And it also should be looked at through the staffing plan. That's going to need to be updated then if we're adding another position, so. If that's the case, but it was already approved in the plan, so we're not going to send it back through committees. Is that acceptable to everyone? To not send it back through committees? Yes, okay. Then we'll bring it back with some numbers at the next meeting. Thank you, Eric. And next up, we have our parent busing contract for Pius, Wisconsin Lutheran, Martin Luther, and St. Matthias. And I do want to mention again, this is a two-step process. We start these things, we have a discussion, we hear your concerns and some people have addressed that. And then, of course, we take that back and we, we would decide at the next meeting. So Doug, you want to present on this one?
Sure. For probably over a year now, the bus company has indicated to us that we could probably save some money if we exercised a different option for providing transportation to students who are residents of the district but attend private schools outside the district but within a five-mile boundary. In other words, if they're more than five miles away, we have no obligation to transport them. We do have an obligation to provide transportation. We've been doing it for years via school bus. And this last year, we had, depending on the day, anywhere from eight to fifteen students between St. Matthias, Pius, and Wisconsin Lutheran, and Martin Luther. It was costing us about five hundred and twenty-five dollars a day or roughly ninety-four thousand dollars for the year. And if we would exercise option in the statutes to offer parent contracts to the families, we estimate that we would be able to save somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty-five to eighty-seven thousand dollars. We know in bringing this forth that some families have taken advantage of the bus and it's been good for them. But when we, our problem is how to justify spending what amounts to, if we had the fifteen kids, would amount to about sixty-three hundred dollars per student for the year to bus them to their out-of-district private schools. So we brought this up to the finance committee last week. It's an administrative recommendation. I know there'll be no vote tonight. There'll be some discussion, I'm sure, about looking for a way to save some money on our transportation system. And we think this is a viable alternative.
Okay, questions from the board? And I think I'll start down here this time. Go ahead.
Okay, so, so Doug, if, if we decided that we're going to give the parents money, right, instead of the busing?
Right.
How much will we give them?
It's roughly four hundred and seventy dollars. I haven't done the calculation yet. The DPI puts out a worksheet that you actually. It's based on your cost per pupil in the previous year excluding special education in kindergarten, nun hour kindergarten, transportation. It's been pretty consistently four hundred and seventy dollars for the last three years. So I expect it'll be somewhere in that range. One of the qualifiers is that our cost to transport children by bus has to be at least one and a half times the overall cost, which is at four seventy. So one and a half times that is seven hundred and five dollars. Looking at the number of, of students that have ridden the bus, we'd be looking at anywhere from a low end of sixty-three hundred dollars per pupil up to eleven thousand eight hundred dollars per student. So offering a parent contract is certainly within the boundaries of the, of the statute.
And we've offered these in the past, because I know in the past we've, we've had this information come to the board about how much the parent contracts were.
Well, at least since I've been here. Well, at least since I've been here, um, one of the things that we can do is, we also can offer parent contracts inside the district. Or if there are people who, um, aren't eligible for, um, transportation aid because they're not in a hazardous area, they actually pay us some money to, to provide the busing. It's a whole different story when we get going outside the district boundaries.
Okay. That's all.
All right, Doug, comments?
The four seventies for the whole entire school year?
Correct.
Have you costed out what would take to have a taxi take them?
I have not. One of the things that I was talking with Stephanie about prior to the meeting was there are five separate options the district can use to provide the transportation and a taxi is one of them, so, um, I certainly will have that information, uh, time for your decision.
So this bus that runs through the neighborhoods, is it, the bus that takes these children to these private schools, is the same bus that runs for our kids? For Whitnall kids?
In the case of the private schools that are located within our boundary, yes.
So they get picked up by everybody else? The Whitnall kids are dropped off and then that child is, or that, whoever, children are taken to the individual schools?
Correct.
And one, so bus had one child the whole year?
Right.
And that was one without kids in it? I'm just trying to understand. I mean, without any of our kids, it was a?
Ri- well, a resident of our district, but a student.
One bus and one student. All year.
Generally, um, well, all the time as far as I know. Wisconsin Lutheran and Pius are pretty close together, so we use the same bus. Or any riders from both of those.
But you only had one student? You had two, two? Well, what is it, why didn't you?
Well, my email from the bus company this afternoon was, there was only one student who rode the Whiskopius bus last year.
There were two, there was a girl. I think he had trouble with her and he kicked her off the bus.
So could you, my recommendation would be that you?
I don't know what she did, but.
That's, that's life, right?
Could you meet with these folks? They've brought up some good points and there's clearly some needs out there. Is there a possibility there's other options? That if you had a meeting with these folks, you could look at some other options that would be acceptable to them? And then bring it to the board before the next meeting? That would be helpful. I think that, because they really did some, on short notice, some homework that, and that would give time to finish up with some of your phone calls that you've made and make sure that we are finding the best way to meet the need. I know you understand that that's a lot of money, if not that many kids are using it. But we, you know, we may have to consider continuing that if that is the only option. But as has been mentioned, I got a feeling we can find a way to solve this. That meets everybody's need.
So Doug?
Or at least lowers our costs a little bit.
Parents can have their, they can opt in and opt out anytime they want throughout the year?
In terms of riding the bus?
Yeah.
The route is there and just like with our in-district routes, we never know who's gonna be on the bus from day to day.
So if we eliminated the route and offered compensation, then I see that if, if they refuse it, then we have no obligation.
Right.
So if we have X amount, refuse it, could we not offer the people that want it more money?
I'm pretty sure you can. You, you couldn't offer them less money, but you could offer them more money.
Why don't you guys have that conversation with the people and then?
But, but they can, the parent, what I'm getting to is, if, if we do that and all of a sudden the parent changes their mind in the middle of the year, then we're on the hook for more transportation. If we go, if we eliminate the bus route and go to a single source or a, you know, um, but they can, they can opt in and out anytime throughout the year.
Well, not really. I would say.
No, they have to sign up in the beginning of the year.
For the, the people who are going out of the district, yes. Because otherwise, we have chaos.
Right, okay. So they have to make a decision.
Right.
So we would know what, what our numbers are then.
Right.
No, they can opt in and out in terms of using it, but that signing up has to happen, right? Because then we said, just schedule the buses and you can't redo that. Yes.
Is there, I get a sense that the people, that the schools that are within the district, I mean, is that, like, are the high schools a separate issue than the elementary schools? If, if the bus is going from the, from the private elementary schools to the public elementary schools, is that a different issue than the schools that are not going to, going to the Whitnall students? Is there a separate process?
There are separate, the elementary buses, there's middle school bus, the high school bus.
It's two, two separate processes. The in-district students are one program, the out-of-district students are handled differently.
Okay, so it's, there's not a difference within the five mile radius? Like, for example, the, if some of the high schools are outside of the five mile radius, that's not a separate process?
If, if you were any stu-, anybody whose student went to a school that is out, is five miles outside the Whitnall School District boundary, we have no obligation to transport at all.
So further conversations with these folks and maybe bring back a recommendation at the next board meeting?
Sure, if I could get, make sure I got the right addresses here before you leave.
All right, thank you for coming tonight. And we'll look forward to, uh, hopefully a modified plan that meets everybody's needs and saves us a little bit of money. All right, thank you. Uh, next, we will have comments from the school board regarding items, agenda items for future consideration. Does anyone have anything at this time? Seeing none then, I would, uh, board member announcements. I'm quiet in the summer, I actually have two.
All right. Well, first of all, I would like to thank Mrs. Blackburn for her twenty years of service to the Whitnall School District. Thank you very much. Uh, my second thing is the, um, Greenfield Department of Parks and Recreation is sponsoring a fundraiser like they do every year. It's a mini golf, uh, invitational. It's, will be held on August sixteen, which is a Saturday. And so each year, they send this and, Luanne, I'm sorry that they didn't send it to you because they didn't have your name as the, the board president. So, um, so they send it to me because I'm a member of the Park and Rec Board. So they are asking for, um, different organizations in Greenfield to, um, uh, come up with a team. And then they, we play miniature golf on a Saturday, lunch is provided and they have prizes and things like that. So, um, it's a sixty-dollar team entry fee. Um, so if anybody's interested to do that, we could talk about that.
See Nancy? Just sign out. Okay, thank you. Any other comments, uh, announcements?
Uh, I was going, well, I got notification today that, um, that National Night Out is August? Let's try to look up, I'm gonna say fifth, yeah, August fifth, August fifth. Five to, I wrote down five to nine, so I think that's what it was. And that's over for Hales Corners. I know it's in the Hales Corners Park. And then Greenfield will also have something, I'm not quite sure of the details of Greenfield or Franklin. But that is, uh, August fifth.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And then we will move into our workshop agenda. We could probably take a five-minute break there, that be all right with everyone? Okay, a motion to, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, seconded? Who's seconded? Okay, moved and seconded? All in favor? I opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. We'll take a five-minute recess and we'll be in the back of the room for the.